But if you use...
We want to thank everyone for coming. We're going to call our meeting to order right now. And we'd like to call on Reverend Lori Ann Bowen, Pastor of First United Methodist Church in Moxville, to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Oh God, you anointed leaders and called prophets of old, lead us to recognize our true representatives and authentic leaders, men and women who love your people and can walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys, who dream their dreams and strive to accompany them in their common goal. In your fire with your spirit, embolden and commission us to transform our political system to serve your people and to bring real glory to your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And now we will call on, to do our pledge, Mr. Glenn Spark. Just briefly about him, he is a U.S. Army retiree after serving our country for 26 years. His military occupational specialty was vehicle mechanic. Mr. Spark was detailed during Desert Storm as a recruiter where he earned his recruiter's badge. Later, he was cross-trained to run heavy equipment and had assignments with multiple medical companies, combat engineers, quartermasters, and field artillery. Mr. Sparks has numerous ribbons and medals earned throughout his service, and he is now an active member of the adjutant of Davie County Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 75. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. Okay?
I'd like to just say, first of all, it's always humbling to pledge allegiance to my country, but I'm honored to do so within my county. So if you'd all stand... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That's okay. That's okay. Ethics and conflict disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of County Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Mr. Renninger, all in favor, uplifted hand. All right. And now, we have the honor of appointing our new clerk. And I will just say this, and we'll let Mr. Vogler is going to give her the oath of office, but we are so proud and so honored to have Karen Logan to take this position. We want to thank Stacy for all she's done over the course of many, many years and many, many terms that all of us have served. But Karen, welcome. You've already hit the ground running, and we thank you for all you're doing.
We need a formal motion and vote then to adopt.
Okay. We need a formal motion. Okay? All right, I have a motion to appoint.
I make that motion.
I have Ms. Finney, Mr. Show second, all in favor. All right, now we can do the formality. I think her son is going to hold the Bible, and her husband is coming.
Her brother is here.
She's... Let's do this first. Let's let her family come up here and get a photo with them, with Karen first, and then we'll... We're second priority in this regard.
That's right.
All right, Commissioners and Mr. Barnett. Okay. We want to welcome tonight National Civic League Board Member Mayor Patty Garrett with us to help make special presentation, and I'm going to call on County Manager Barnett to take care of that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to give you a quick rundown of Mayor Garrett from Decatur, Georgia. Patty Garrett was elected to the Decatur City Council in 2009 and was elected and has been mayor since 2016. She recently was elected to serve on the Board of the Atlanta Regional Commission, Ethy A R C. She serves as a member of the Local Leadership Housing Action Committee on the Community Resource Committee. Mayor Garrett is the immediate past president of the Board of the National Civic League and serves on the Georgia Municipal Association's Federal Policy Council, participates as a member of the GMA Equity and Inclusion Commission and as a member of the Mayor's Reading Club. Mayor Garrett is a graduate of the Leadership de Cobb and the Atlanta Regional Commission's Regional Leadership Institution. She serves as the honorary chair of the Islamic Speakers Bureau in 2019 Gala and honored women of influence and has recently been named to the ISB Advisory Council. She has taught nutrition, provided nutrition counseling services, and worked as a clinical dietitian at Georgia State University and the Emory Health Services. She is interested in policy particularly related to the access of healthy foods, equity, environmental policies, active lifestyles, and the role of local government in fostering healthy, edible, and vibrant communities. Mayor Garrett is a graduate of Texas Christian University and received her Master's of Science degree from the University of Tennessee. She and her husband Gary live in Winona Park and enjoy walking, hiking, and visiting their three grown sons and their families. Mayor Garrett, we welcome you to Davie County.
It's really an honor to be here, and hello, everyone. As the county manager, you can tell I come from the city background, said I am the mayor of the city of Decatur and a member of the National Civic League's Board of Directors, and I'm really thrilled to be here with you today. And I'll mention some of the folks in the audience and have them come up in a few minutes. But I mentioned in my bio, I really love visiting our sons. One happens to live in Asheville, and so we made a little trip there yesterday and enjoyed spending some time with our son and his family on the way here, and it's always lovely to be in North Carolina. And I hope you're aware that last month, the National Civic League hosted the 74th Annual All-America City Award, and it is also for counties, and it was in Denver. And the annual award recognizes the work of 10 communities in all of the United States in using inclusive civic engagement to address critical issues and to create stronger connections among residents, businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, and government leaders. And each year, the All-America City Award has a different theme, and this year's award in 2023, the league focused on recognizing communities that are authentically engaged in youth, engaging youth in identifying and addressing local challenges to create more thriving communities. And Davie County submitted their application back in February, and let me tell you, it's a process because we were also a part of the competition this year as well, and they described their theme and the particular focus on the Ignite Davie College Promise Program, Davie Works, and the SURF Board Grant Makers. Their application then underwent an extensive review by a jury of external committee experts, and they found that Davie County's application was a strong one, and they were invited to attend as one of 20 cities and counties in the actual competition. And then during that competition, we were there from July the 9th through the 11th, and every city and county that was a part of it was able to present a 10-minute presentation to the jury, and then they narrowed that 20 down to 10. And it's really an exciting time. It's you wait with bated breath to see if your county or city is going to be called out as one of those. I think everybody out here, and we were not one of the first five, and they were not one of the first five, so you just keep counting down that number. So we give the presentations in alphabetical order, but the winners are just randomly called out, which is also adds to the suspense. Because we go in alphabetical order for the presentation, Decatur was just after Davie County, so I didn't see their presentation in person, but I went back and looked at it. It's on YouTube. I encourage you to look at it if you haven't seen it. Members of the jury, and I was not a member of the jury, but I was extremely impressed by the collaborative spirit of Davie County as well as the multiple avenues available to young leaders. And I loved the enthusiasm and the results that were shared as a part of the presentation. The SURF Youth Program with Youth Helping Youth, that grant program, I think everyone was really impressed with the youth that presented about that and also with the, just the program itself, that sort of self-regenerating and works with youth to help provide mentorship and also to be self-funding and to have a nest egg the next year for the next group. The Career and Technical Education Program, I was so impressed, they have 27 career pathways as a part of the high school, and 98% of the CTE concentrators graduate, which is remarkable in a school, and about 77% of the students that attend the high school are part of that CTE program. And it was really fun to hear from the individual students saying, "I was a part of the program that helped inspire me to become a teacher or to work as a medical technician or to sort of follow what their interests were." And then the Ignite Davie Program was also impressive with a two-year college completion rate about three times the norm of the community college completion rate in two years. So with that, it's really my honor to recognize Davie County as an All-American, 2023 All-American County, and to present you with your award plaque. And congratulations to everyone who participated and who is doing this amazing work. And so I will present you, Chair Jones, or, and then I'd love to have, if it's all right, to have some of the folks. I see a lot of the... I recognize the shoes.
Well, I would, now, we absolutely love that you're here, and we love that you want to present to us, but I would ask Ken to come forward, and then Ken, you kind of bring folks up, the group that went out to Denver. I think, I think, I think that's appropriate in terms of presenting this award, please. And we'll be glad to come down at some point, but...
I think Ryan needs to be in the center. He's our manager.
And thank you all for having me, and I will be leaving. I have to drive back to Decatur tonight because I have a meeting in the morning, and it's about a four-and-a-half hour drive, so, but I've been very excited to be here and a part of this presentation, and I know all of you, and all of you are really proud of the work that's being done by the representatives and by these amazing youth and youth programs. So thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mayor. And we will, Commissioners, you have any comments? Well, I would just say, thank you, Ken, and all of the committee that did such hard work to make this happen. We really, we really appreciate it, and it is a good example of what Davie County is all about, and we thank you so much. And have a safe trip back. Public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we start the public comment, I always like to go over some of the rules that we have. Those rules are up at the front when you signed up, but I'll go back over those. Each person who's there and is speaking during the public comment shall sign up on the sign-up sheet, provide your full name, the topic which you're about to discuss, and each person is allowed three minutes to speak. And I time that three minutes with a timer, and then as you reach two minutes, I hold that up. When you reach one minute, I hold up another one. When you reach 30 seconds, I hold up another one, and when your time is out, I hold up another one that says, "Please stop." So we appreciate everybody doing that and without having to be called down or anything for being extremely long-winded. Each speaker is to address the board as a whole, shall not ask for any verbal exchanges back from the board. It's not the intent of public comment to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. There's no discussions between the speaker and the members of the audience either. All comments are verbal. You're not allowed to play any recordings or video devices. All comments are limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of Davie County Board of County Commissioners, i.e., you can't talk about federal income taxes and expect this board to do anything about that. And speakers must make all presentations from the podium and not allowed to physically approach the board or staff members without the express invitation of the chair. And the rest of these, since we only have four signed up, we don't have to worry about 30 minutes or time running out and that sort of thing. Thank you. So with that, I will call each individual by how they signed up, and have you come forward to the podium, state your full name, so we have a record of that, and then you're allowed to speak. Thank you very much. Jane Simpson on Ignite Davie.
My name is Jane Simpson for the Davie Community Foundation, and I promise I will be less than three minutes. Mr. Barnett, Commissioners, and community, the Davie Community Foundation is really proud to be part of an All-American County, but we believe Ignite Davie and its availability to all of Davie residents really put our county over the top in receiving this designation. Now we need to make Ignite Davie College Promise permanent for future generations of our children. Ignite Davie has raised $2 million of the $3 million needed for the program to be perpetual. Thanks to the generosity of some of the Ignite Davie partners, a $500,000 challenge match has been offered. The partner individuals and organizations, including the Davie Community Foundation and 100% of its Board of Directors, are joining together to match every dollar contributed to Ignite Davie by December 31st, up to $500,000. Once completed, the challenge will be met and the goal reached. On behalf of the Foundation Board of Directors and staff who are also committed, I challenge each of you, county manager, commissioners, attorney, to give personally to help us reach the goal. I challenge the Foundation Board to do that 100% participation, and they all responded. So we hope the county will be 100% committed to changing the lives of our children. Community, consider yourselves also challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandy Koontz. Topic is books.
I'm Brandy Koontz, and I'm here to talk about books. This book, The Holy Bible, is the most important book that I have the luxury of owning. In preparation for my comments tonight, I sat with this book and contemplated what it would have been like to have never had access to it, to have maybe never heard what's inside. Then I thought about the Constitution and the First Amendment and how it protects all of us and our intellectual freedoms through access to content. I thought about the people who have sacrificed or even died to protect the freedoms that we enjoy. It has come to my attention that a book was removed from the shelves of our library at the request of one person after that one person refused to comply with library policy that is necessary to get a book removed from circulation. That action violates the library's due process procedure. It violates the First Amendment and equates to censorship. Legal requirements regarding First Amendment applies to publicly funded libraries. The Library Bill of Rights is based on the First Amendment and the U.S. Constitution. It promotes and protects intellectual freedoms through its guarantees of freedom of speech and press. Public libraries are democracy at work. Everyone has access to information in the library. It encourages fact-checking, and it levels the playing field for those who do not have the ability to afford their own books and that would otherwise not have access to the content that they are interested in. The freedom to read is also guaranteed by the Constitution. In a free society, individuals are free to determine for themselves what content they want to read. No person or group has the right to take the law into their own hands, circumvent due process, and impose its own concepts of politics or morality upon other members of a democratic society. Over 60 years ago, the Supreme Court of the United States held that the Constitution requires due process procedure to critically examine all challenges to expression of this freedom before they can be suppressed. Under due process, challenges of resources, those resources remain in the collection until that review is complete. Removal of content from the library by any other means violates our First Amendment rights of all citizens and equates to censorship. I know many people didn't want me to speak here tonight. However, as an attorney, I too took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and North Carolina to the extent that they are consistent with one another. So I am here because I took that oath. It is my intention tonight to not be harsh, but to inform, as a citizen that voted for you. I want to see the right decisions made for our community. I leave you with contemplating this one thought. If one person asked to have this book removed, would it receive the same treatment?
Chair, next we have Kathleen Phelan. She is to speak on the library also.
Hello. My name is Kathleen Phelan. I am delighted to have the honor to speak to you who have power and to all of you out here. Let me engage you a little bit in a mid-afternoon, mid-week visit of mine to the Davie County Public Library. There was a little person in front of me, and I consider anybody little because I'm tall to be about this height, and this little lady was in front of me as Andrew politely checked her book out and asked her if he could be of any assistance to her. You know, that's a very everyday, common thing, right? But I don't hear that very often, and he was engaged with her. It was an eyeball-to-eyeball communication, and when I went up there, Andrew did the same thing to me. I have never left the Davie County Public Library with what I did not want, what I did not need, and if I wanted something extra or I needed a book to put on reserve for me, it was done without question. I am not the smartest person on the computer, and I equate that to my age, but I've never felt inferior. I've never been put down. I've always left there with a great deal of respect for the people that helped me and also for myself, and that's what we all want, isn't it? Now, before you, I can tell you also that the people that are engaged in working there as your employees are very intelligent, they're educated, and you've got resources that are just exceptional, particularly with a Rachel Nelson, who has not only expanded what it was for our children in this community, but also for all of us. For instance, it wasn't just children who could take in the challenge of the summer learning season, but all of us in this room, all of you here as Commissioners. I thought that was awesome because that brought more people in to a public library program, not just this group or that group. It just made it more inclusive. Therefore, whoever you select to engage with this Davie County Public Library should be there to accelerate it, to take off even more, not somebody who is not familiar with the library, not familiar with the people, not familiar with the resources, not familiar with the programs. We want somebody to go in there that's knowledgeable, intelligent, and can take this group of very gifted people off and running. Thank you.
Next, we have Christine Mears, and she has put down Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Mears, are you speaking on behalf of the Library Board so you would have a total of five minutes as a group?
Thank you. I'm Kristin Mears. I'm the vice chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and tonight I'm... And tonight, I'm speaking regarding the process followed by the Davie County Board of Commissioners in appointing board members to the county departments. I ask what the process is to select candidates and to put candidates on the agenda for a vote by the commissioners. What selection criteria apply? Does the whole Board of Commissioners have a say in which names are voted on? Or is that selection made by a single commissioner? My question stems from the actions taken by the commissioners over the past year to put forth names for the Library Board that were not and are not the names recommended by the Library Trustees and Director. I've come to learn that sometimes you have difficulty finding volunteers to serve on advisory boards. However, that is not the case with the library. We've always had enough recommendations, if not more, to fill our vacancies. Yet in each case over the past year, names put forth by the commissioners have included people not recommended by the library and not known to the library. Case in point is tonight's proposed candidate slate for the Library Board. We gave you three recommendations for two open positions, yet you only selected one of our nominees. The candidate nominated by us has owned and used her library card for over thirty years. The candidate put forth by you does not own a library card. How can someone effectively serve the best interests of the library and community when they aren't familiar with the current role of the public library or use its resources and services? Why should anyone be given the power to make decisions about something with which they have no firsthand knowledge? I read the unfamiliar candidate's application in tonight's agenda packet. She listed her reason for wanting to join the trustees was to preserve the integrity of our board. I want to understand how someone who has never attended our meetings, never met us, doesn't use the library, yet makes assertions about our integrity, was your idea of the better choice for our board over the two other applications you received from former library historians and volunteers. We have appeared at these meetings, called and emailed you with very little response and no explanation as to why this Board of Commissioners is the first to insist on placing their own people on the Library Board. You have simply stated you are doing it because you can. Given the fact that Library Trustee appointments have been made by the commissioners that have led the public to question the process and outcome of your actions, I believe that the Board of Commissioners should make public its appointment process and its selection criteria. Doing so would be consistent with the Code of Ethics adopted and signed by the commissioners that stipulates, one, board members should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and consistent manner, and, two, board members should make clear that an environment of transparency and candor is to be maintained at all times. Commissioners have a duty to the taxpayers and voters to operate with transparency and integrity. This is an opportunity to demonstrate that you are doing so. Please use your appointment authority to make sound decisions, not decisions that lead the public to suspect your decision-making ability and agenda. Thank you.
And that concludes individuals who signed up. Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Suberved.
Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Shove, seconds. Any comments? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Uplifted hand. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the county manager's report. Mr. Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Since our last meeting in June, I want to recognize in our Human and Health Services Department are folks that work in our Child Support Unit. This is the unit that goes out there and collects child support-backed payments. If you look at it from a percentage of what's been collected basis, Davie County is number one in the state for collection. This unit has collected nearly $2 million this year, which goes directly to the children that they are trying to support. So I want to thank Melissa Nivett, Erica Moore, Krista Ramru, Jolene Rivers, Amanda Jones, and Deputy Drew Renninger for their hard work in making sure that our children are getting the funds that they deserve. Second, I want to congratulate the, and Human and Health Services, they had a really good month of June. I want to congratulate the Health, Public Health Division. As we reported back in March, they went through the accreditation process, and they were finally awarded their accreditation. They actually received accreditation with honors. There are 148 points of different areas that you can be graded in, and we scored highly in 147 of them. And I believe the one point that we just missed was a timing issue. So we had a near-perfect score in getting reaccreditation, and I want to thank Tiffany Erfkage, Allison Hamilton, Brittany Mitchell, Justin White, and Lisa Vester. They were part of the Public Health team. Public Health is a large department, but this particular team is the ones who worked together. Due to COVID and timing of having to push back our reaccreditation, they were responsible for uploading over six years of data into the review process to get us reaccredited. So I want to thank them for their hard work. Then also, I want to think, oh, actually, I want to point out that on August 5th, if you haven't seen the signs up around the community, at the Bull Hole is our annual duck race. If you would like to buy a ticket, I think Paul Moore is here in the crowd, and he will gladly take your money for that charity. On July, on Saturday, July 29th, at the Davie County Convenience Center, we're having one of our electronic recycling events. So if you have any old electronics that you're not supposed to throw away on the 29th, you can take and have it properly recycled. And then finally, as you saw tonight, we, at our All-American County Award, we are working on the process that as you enter Davie County going forward, you will always see a sign that says that Davie County is the 2023 recipient of the All-American County Award. And I know I said finally, but I'll add one more real quick. I want to welcome Karen is our new clerk, and I want to thank Stacy for her work in the transition, and we're glad to have you onboard. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Barnett? All right. We'll move on to item 11, old business.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Today, we're going back to the proposed rezoning that we did at the last meeting for Davie County Zoning Map Amendment, DC 23C 30008. The applicant is Jordan Budd. His rezoning request is for a conditional rezoning for a storage facility. Subsequently after the meeting, Mr. Budd and myself have met numerous times over the phone and in person, and I presented and sent you guys the proposed conditions of what Mr. Budd is wanting to do with the facility. What he is suggesting is the intended use of the facility would be for a storage unit as defined in the Davie County zoning ordinance. He's agreed to the hours of operation that the facility would be closed from 12:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. He is proposing to put a six-foot black opaque fence around the entire facility to the north of the property, which joins the only residential zoning. He wants to add emerald, green, evergreens on the north property line. I'm not going to try to that. And then on the road frontage of the property, he wants to add azaleas and parentheses along the road frontage. So at this time, I'd be for Cynthia. There you go. Sorry. Not arborist. Wow. That's pretty bad, I know. Apologize for that. So I don't even try to pronounce the other word for the arborita. So anyway.
Arborvitae.
There we go. Yeah, that's what the emerald, the evergreen, he's proposing to do. So at this time, I'd ask any questions of this board that I can address at this time.
The screening's on the front, that, affront 601. How tall will those be?
The screening is still going to be the six-foot opaque fence, and then the, he's wanting to do the azaleas and the parentheses around that. So the screening would be that.
Yellow bells.
Yeah, yellow bells. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I knew what an azalea was. But I wasn't sure. Okay, so it'll be five or six feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Comments or questions?
Either one. Either one.
I guess what I'm saying is comment with regard to agreeing to any of these changes. Or just. I would just say out of fairness that if it's agreeable to the board, that, you know, I was ignorant coming into this meeting about exactly how these work. Upon educating myself a little bit, I see that we have a precedent for other ones being open 24 hours a day. So while all that discussion was good and spirited and good for the order, in fairness to Mr. Budd, and just like anything, we have a precedent of it being, those being open 24 hours a day. And I even got confirmation from our high sheriff that these are not areas that really cause a lot of trouble in the community. I hope JD didn't mind me saying that. So, you know, my thought on that would be that that provision, unless Mr. Budd really wants to make that a provision, I would say I'd be okay with that one being removed.
Okay. I would say when, we don't, we're not going back through a public hearing tonight.
No, no. The public hearing has already been closed.
When we make the motion, I would say you can indicate that in your motion at that point, okay? And we'll get a second.
And best practices on a conditional use is that it be reduced to writing and signed by the applicant before the vote or at the time of the vote, or that the vote be conditioned upon him signing the conditions that you set forth?
Which he has graciously been agreeable to. So, Brent, when we make the motion, you don't.
Any other comments or questions?
I had spoken with Mr. Easter earlier, well, I guess last week it was, and I had asked him, and I just want, I told him that we bring this up for the benefit of the public. Now that we are beginning a conditional zoning process, which is a little different than what we have normally done, I asked him, would these conditions remain with the property if Mr. Budd changed his mind about purchasing it? And so I would like for you to tell about that a little bit.
Yes. With the conditional rezoning, these are, the duration of this property is with this. So if, if the applicant chooses, if this board chooses to approve these specific conditions, it will follow this property with the life of the property. Any other subsequent changes or anything that anyone would want to do to this property, they would have to go back before the planning board as well as approval from this property. So in essence, this, this property can only be used for this unless an act of the board or the planning board and then an act of the board of the county commissioners upon approval of this.
And the reason that I had asked him that was because in the past, we've, I think we've had some things go awry because we didn't have those conditions. And I would just say, I'm not 100% loving this area, but I'm trusting that you're going to make it look very nice. Even though it is a storage building facility, it definitely isn't a more residential area than our other storage building facilities, and hopefully you will be kind enough to take that into consideration and make it look nice.
Anything else? I would say this, Mr. Budd, I appreciate you getting with Mr. Easter and you guys, you accommodating the desires and requests of some of the commissioners. That, that really says a lot, and we thank you for that. We have no further questions. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the rezoning for Mr. Budd to, but exclude the provision about the 12 to 4 and go with the provisions of providing the arborvitae and the azaleas, the forsythia, and the six-foot opaque fence. I think I covered it all.
And would that be subject to something in writing by Mr. Budd that indicates he consents to this before it becomes effective?
Got it.
You want to add that to? Yeah.
That he consents to these provisions before it's accepted or approved.
Formally, Jordan, you just sign the documents with them. Okay. And Mr. Poindexter, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, uplifted hand? Any opposed? All right.
And the only reason I said what I said is because this court case that says it needs to be in writing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Easter. Any other old business? Any new business? Commissioner comments? Richard?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. It was, it's wonderful to look out across the audience and see every chair full. Congratulations to Karen, our new clerk to the board, and thanks to Stacy for all the cat herding she has done all these years. I know it's, it's a tough job keeping everybody together and straight. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to the people of Davie County. They're the reason that we were declared an All-American city, or county in this case. Everyone pulls together, and it's so wonderful to see that. And congratulations goes out to everyone. I had a lady call before I came to the meeting this evening. She was all excited because she lives on Main Church Road, and she heard the bids were going to be let for the water line down there because their water is so bad. But I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work that the county staff has done to get that done. And I've got to say too, I came in 64 the other day to Moxville, and the water department was down in a hole on the side of 64 on one of the hottest days that we had. I'd like to say thank you to those folks, and thank you to all of our county employees who work so conscientiously for the people of Davie County. And also, congratulations to the Health Department for getting their accreditation renewed with such a high score. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Chair?
Thank you. Always appreciate everyone coming out, appreciate the good numbers. Karen, welcome, and Stacy, congratulations. Get rid of us. I, all our employees do a great job, and I say that about every meeting, but it's true. But I want to revisit the Embers, the All-American City celebration we had a couple weeks ago. That was just quite a night in Davie County. The weather cooperated, and it was, I haven't seen, heard what the numbers were, but it was, it was impressive. And Paul Moore and his department, it was, it was a professional job, and thank you. To the Health Department, Richard and I happen to serve on that board, so we work with those folks, and they are a dedicated group, as, again, all our employees. But that accreditation, that was, that was a big deal. That was a lot of work. And so we're glad that we were able to get through that, and the Child Support Team, again, a very dedicated group. On our consent agenda tonight, we, we approved several people for service on boards. And the boards that we have across the county, they're volunteer, most of them are advisory. But we, we need those boards to help us govern. And so if you stepped up, raised your hand, and offered to your talents and time for no pay, thank you for that, and we're, it's sorely needed, so thank you for that. With that, please come back next month.
Mr. Shove?
I would like to congratulate the county on the All-American Award, and I, the video that we saw, I guess the day I saw it was when we were at a EDC meeting, and Terry Brohly had it playing, and I just can't say enough about how well the presentation, the performance, the pride, the energy was, and I'm so proud of that. I have wanted to say a few comments regarding. I have wanted to say a few comments regarding the Library Board and just boards in general. This is not directed at anybody in a negative way, but I just wanted to give my opinion on the process of boards in general. And I'm just going to kind of read it because sometimes you just don't want to get to muttering too much. But it's my hope that we can at some point achieve a productive dialogue to occur regarding appointment process of the Library Board and move past some of the issues that we seem to be having. I have, and I intend to thoroughly review any candidate that is recommended by the library as a prospective board member. Furthermore, I have no agenda to exclude specific candidates who may be recommended by the library. I would just simply ask, as an olive branch, or whatever you might want to call it, that if I meet someone through the course of all my numerous activities, and Brian knows this about me, and I think Mark does especially, I'm always working an angle wherever I go looking for talent. So if I meet them at my farmer's market, I meet them at the Moxville Farmer's Market, and I think they need to be included in the community, and I really truly feel like they would be an asset to any board or the Library Board. How should I get them to apply sincerely? And what reasonable expectation should I have that this, his or her name ultimately be forwarded as a member of the board? I feel like I was elected to serve all the citizens of Davie County. I firmly believe that all the boards need to be inclusive and as broad of geographical and demographic representation as the citizenry of Davie County is. I would say this should apply to the Library Board. I would further say that we need a majority of members who have volunteered in the history room, been patrons, and have a passion for the great resource our library is. I also think there should be room for any willing, community-centered individual who is not currently involved with the Library Board be afforded consideration for a position on the board. That individual may very well provide diverse points of view and become a great board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shove. Ms. Finney?
I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'm going to tell y'all Stacy probably had a party a couple of weeks ago because she doesn't have to mess with us anymore, bless her. And Karen is soon going to learn that we are very difficult to deal with sometimes. So thank both of you, Karen, welcome, Stacy, thank you for all that you've done. And I say that jokingly, but we really are kind of a handful, so good luck to you. Loriann, thank you so much for sharing your prayer with us tonight and for being here with us. So it's already been really hot this summer, and there's been a lot going on. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank the sheriff, Joseph, Cameron, all the fire departments. You all have already had to be standing out in this weather in emergency situations. We've already had some, some things going on this summer. Thank you all for all that you do. And Johnny and his crew, all of you that have to work outside, extra kudos to you. But thank you to all of our employees, and thank you to the lady who came here to give our All-American County presentation tonight. And I just hope that you all will have a safe summer. Thank you.
I don't think I can add a whole lot to that, other than just to say thank you to each of you for all you do to make Davie County a great place to raise a family. Stacy, thank you. You have been a blessing. Karen, welcome. You've already filled my calendar up, and I really, I really appreciate all you're already doing. You've already hit the ground running, and we really appreciate it. Thanks to all of our employees that, that are consumer front and help the citizens of Davie County. And so if we have nothing further, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Mr. Poindexter makes that motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Finney, seconds, all in favor? We stand adjourned, thank you.